It might be a little bit less. That's how we got to seven million dollars. That's the emergency appropriation. And then there is a walk on bond ordinance, which was prepared by outside counsel, which is why it's here this late. Was not prepared in-house. And that's authorization to issue the refunding bonds to actually get the seven million dollars in cash. The deficit in the health benefits line is caused primarily by three factors. One, we have increased utilization, particularly among retired beneficiaries of our policies. And two, we have catastrophic claims, which is a claim over a hundred thousand dollars, but less than a million where the excess insurance picks up. So I'm sorry. Less than three hundred thousand dollars. So when you add all those claims up, that comes out to approximately 3.5 million. We have some other claims that are in excess and go to be paid by the excess insurer or the stop-loss insurer.
The plan we have right now is expiring at the end of this month?
Plan expires at the end of November. But we would have to extend it, and I was going to get to that in terms of resolution 456.
Okay.
456 is a resolution electing to participate in the state health benefits program, which is a flat premium program. When we're self-insured, we pay on a claims-by-claims basis. So if the claims come in at a million dollars, we owe a million dollars. If the claims come in at two million dollars, we owe two million dollars. The state health benefits program runs on a flat premium basis. We know exactly what we have to pay. From a budgetary standpoint, it's more, it's less risky. And it's really our only option unless we want to continue to assume the risk that our claims are going to rise and costs are going to rise and we end up in the same position we're in now. So this doesn't, we're still looking at other insurance options, but, and this doesn't lock us into the state health benefits plan. However, they need 90 days' notice, which is three full months before they'll put us on the plan. So that would mean February 1st.
So what happens between, because you said the end of this month expires, right?
Correct.
So what happens between now and then?
We extend for December and January the policy or the program that we have now. I've already secured the agreement of Maritain Insurance to do that. And that's how, and then we pay for the January 1.6 million by virtue of a reduction in the premium for the state health benefits for the year. So we'll only be getting them for 11 months in 2026. So the offset of 1.6 should be picked up by that, that less, that one less.
Is this plan cheaper? Or are we going into this plan because it's a, it's flat rate? You know, we know exactly what we're going to be paying, but it's not cheaper than what we're in now? That's...
Well, the plan we're in now is potentially cheaper, but you assume the risk. And this year, when we assumed the risk, we didn't do well. Because the utilization went up and so did the catastrophic claims. So in order to avoid that volatility, we wanted to go to a straight premium program. But it will cause a significant increase in your budgetary line item for insurance.
You say significant increase. What, what are you saying?
Probably five to six million dollars.
Wow. So that's got to go into our FY '26 budget, right?
Correct.
Along with this seven million?
Well, the seven million, if we get it approved the way we're asking for it from the local finance board, would be paid out over 10 years.
So I kind of asked this question at the last meeting. You know, we're such in a big hole. Okay, this is going to put us in a bigger hole for FY '26. How are we going to pull ourselves out of this hole? What is the plan?
I think we have to have a meeting with the finance committee to go over exactly where we are and what we want to do. I can't give you, I wish I could sit here and say, this is the plan, but it's not that simple.
No, I understand that. But you should have some, you should know about around now what, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and make it work.
Well.
Because this is November now.
Yeah.
January is right around the corner. We're going to be talking about this budget. So you should have some inkling, you know, how we're going to make this work, you know? Because we're in a big hole.
Yeah, we're going to be...
That's in a bigger hole.
We're going to be looking at a tax increase. We're going to be looking at the use of surplus. And those combination of other revenues that we may present to the council for use.
Okay, and this is another bond. And you know, almost every council meeting we have, we're bonding something, okay? So on our left now, how, how, how are we looking with the, with bonding? Okay, because like I said, we, we bond out for a lot of stuff. Okay, and how is that affecting us?
So for the last two ordinances that we did, the lead service line and this one, it doesn't affect our net debt. So the entire seven million will be forgiven. We aren't authorizing new debt. We are issuing notes. So the seven million won't affect our overall net debt. We'll just have to pay interest on the principal.
And neither does the 20 million on the lead service line.
Thank you.
You're done, Councilwoman Hilbert? This next, and then Councilwoman Montague. Councilwoman Hilbert?
Thank you, Council President. Through you to the business administrator. Could you tell me when we decided to leave the state benefits plan?
Oh. 2015 or 16.
Okay. And I, I believe in the past, we had a conversation about it and you had some concerns. Do you feel that some of those concerns have dissolved, diminished? Or do you still have some concerns about the state health plan?
Well, I think anybody who reads the newspaper about the state health benefits plan would have some concerns. They have volatility in terms of their increases on an annual basis. And it's no secret that the state health benefits plan is not in the greatest fiscal shape that a pooled risk plan should be. However, that being said, it still eliminates the risk of a claim, pay on a claim-by-claim basis, self-insured policy at this particular point in time.
Okay, so the claim-by-claim is what's really draining us, for lack of a better word. This would be...
We get a range every year from the risk assessment company that we use in terms of, this is the best you're going to do with, with your self-insurance and this is the worst you're going to do. We've always been in the mid-range to the better side of that range. Until we got into the HIF, which we helped create. And we had a four-million-dollar unexpected claim utilization in a particular area. We addressed that, but the HIF nonetheless asked us to leave. Because the HIF has to pick up that four million dollars. It's not just paid by us. That's the benefit of being in a pooled program. If your claims run amok in a particular year, you only have to pay the premium and anything over your premium is picked up by the pool. So if I were to have, let's just say, two catastrophic health claims of two and a half million dollars each. And then I put that on top of what my premium is, that five million dollars gets picked up as part of the pool. So I'm only responsible for my premium. So if your claims are going to exceed your premium, the pool is the place you want to be. If your claims never equal your premium because your loss experience is such that you're, you're actually paying into the pool and subsidizing others, then under those circumstances, you get out of the state health benefits, which is what we did in 2016.
Okay, so being that our best decision would be to go back into the state benefit plan, do you have any further recommendations to the council in order to kind of cushion this blow? Because I mean, it's, like you said, it's volatile. We can't predict how many claims we'll get in 2026.
So it's no secret, because the unions all talk, that we have requested concessions or give backs with respect to healthcare as part of the contract negotiations. Some of those give backs would save us substantial amounts of money.
Okay.
Give you an example. Ninety-four percent of the people insured by the city of Orange choose the Direct 10 program that we offer. If you were to choose the Direct 20 program or the Direct 25 program, your copay goes up, but our premium goes down substantially. That's just one example. Another example is in an out-of-pocket, I'm sorry, in an out-of-network situation where an employee goes to an out-of-network doctor or an out-of-network surgeon. That surgeon gets paid 90% of whatever the cost for him. His price is for that procedure. Whereas if they're in-network, the insurance company has negotiated a fee with providers that's substantially less than what the out-of-network provider charges. So because we're paying 90% reimbursement on that out-of-network procedure, we're losing a lot of money on out-of-network usage. So what we've proposed is to change the out-of-network reimbursement to 150% of Medicare. And that would be a substantial reduction in what the reimbursement to out-of-network doctors would be. And that would save us substantial amount of money. And all it would do for our employees is they would have to use, or they'd have the option of going out of network because we have to provide that option, but they would have a financial incentive to stay in-network.
Thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Can I just jump in and ask a question? But because it's pertaining to what Councilwoman Hilbert said. So when you said 150% regarding Medicare, so is that 150% of the allowed, whatever is allowed with Medicare? Like is 80% of the allowed charges, not the...
Correct.
Okay.
So if the Medicare charge for a procedure, I'm going to give you an example. If you have a torn cartilage or torn meniscus and you go for an arthroscopy, Medicare will pay you a agreed-upon governmental reimbursement rate. Let's call it 80%. That 80% is actually based on a national average, not regional. So you're picking up the benefit of the surgeon in the middle of Nebraska or Wyoming, who charges a lot less money for that procedure than the surgeon in New Jersey or New York. By going to 150% of that, you're still providing, you're still giving the provider an opportunity to make money. But it's still less than, substantially less than a 90% reimbursement of the standard regional charge.
Because it's an average.
Correct.
Okay. Councilwoman Montague, sorry.
Um, so we're, we're going to be going with Horizon?
Well, in the state health benefits plan, there's a choice between Aetna and Horizon, but they make the choice for you.
Okay. Now, we're in this deficit. You know, I don't know about the council, do we? Are we going to be thinking about using community benefits? I wouldn't want to lean that way.
I think we have to leave that option on the table and have a discussion about it when we have better numbers for '26.
Right.
Just like we have to leave the option on the table that we're going to go and beg for more money from the state.
Anybody else? Okay. Any of the, any of the, we was, we were speaking about any of the three, 456, 457, and 458. So if you have any questions regarding that before we actually vote on 456, 2025, right? So if you have any questions regarding 457, 2025, or 458, 2025, for people who popped in a little bit later. Anybody?
Council President, for 458...
Councilwoman Hilbert?
For 458-2025, refunding bond, making an application to the local finance board. Would we hear back from them before the year's end?
Yeah, the application will be heard in December, right?
December 10th?
And we have a council meeting after that.
Okay, I was just going to ask. To read, I think it's December 16th.
Sixteenth.
To the last, early year. Okay.
And Councilwoman Hilbert, you can go on the local finance board website and you can look up their agendas and you'll see what's going to be placed on that agenda.
Thank you.
Council, you done, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Can you just, just explain 457, like, one more time? Just...
Sure.
I came in right when you were telling, but just real, like...
Sure. So what I was explaining is that in the health benefits line in our current budget, we have left between 40 and 50,000 dollars. We have calculated out to the end of the year how much money we will need to pay health insurance and prescription. In addition to that, we have calculated what's called a tail, which is claims that come in before the end of the policy period but are not billed until after the end of the policy period. So going into 2026, we will have this tail that we have to pay for claims that were incurred in 2025. When we calculate the tail, it's roughly 3.5, 3.6 million dollars. And we're estimating, but we're estimating based on how claims have accumulated on a month-to-month basis. We've estimated the cost of the health insurance and the prescription to be roughly 1.9 million. Neither of those numbers include rebates or reimbursements from our stopgap insurer. So some of those number, or Chapter 78 contributions. So those numbers will come down a little bit, which gets us under the seven million, and I round it to seven million dollars. And whatever we don't use of the seven million will be canceled.
Now, I heard you say something about a reverse, like it's going to be forgiven. Can you just say that one more time about the seven million?
Not forgiven, but it's a refunding bond. So the ordinance piece of it makes it a refunding bond. So instead of budgeting for the entire seven million in next year's budget, we're going to the local finance board asking for permission to budget the seven million over 10 years so that essentially would be 700,000 to help every budget. There was a question regarding the debt because we're going to be issuing notes for this that have cash on hand. As far as the cash, it doesn't affect our net debt. So this was, this won't affect our net debt. We only have to pay interest on the seven million that we borrowed for the notes.
And is this a one-time hit? Like is this a, a major blow that we're correcting to not have it come again?
So yes, it's a one-time hit. However, as I said in response to Councilman Ross, it will result, no matter how you look at it, we're going to have an increase in our tax because of the healthcare line for 2026. And we're not the only community that's struggling with healthcare issues and budget impacts.
Nobody cares about those other communities.
I didn't say they do.
I'm just being honest. They just, it's, and I don't play with healthcare, you know? Having a son that had 13 surgeries, like, before first grade, like, I get it. It's not something you want to play with. Those hospital stays, the medications and things. I, I want to make sure. I don't want to have someone have to choose their child's surgery or, you know, it's just, I don't know, I just need some good news. These blows are knocking me out. So when do you think we would have a plan on how we can attack it? I, I know that's what Councilwoman Ross was asking.
I have to sit with this, I have to sit with the CFO, but I was thinking that we would do some meetings with council members in small groups starting in November after the leak.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
I'm going to jump back in here. Going back to what Councilman, I believe, Montague was mentioning earlier between Aetna and Horizon. I know Aetna is going through some changes right now because I have Aetna. And I'm self-paying, you know, because I own a company. It's not through a corporate or the municipality. So have you all done a comparison? Or will they be offering a comparison on the drug list, like the prices? And, and, you know, certain procedures and stuff that our employees will need?
So the benefits that will be offered in the state health benefits plan have to be equal to or better than the benefits that the employees currently get. That's, that's the law. That's the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
So I don't anticipate any differences in copays or available drugs.
Okay, all right. I mean, the tax part, that's not fun to talk about. But, you know, with the way that things are going, especially November 1st is hitting and a lot of people are contemplating bills and longevity during the wintertime, during the holidays. We just, I understand that all of us here are very concerned on what happens to all the employees. So I, I would definitely be interested in continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I do have a question.
Sure.
So regarding this not being foreseen in the 2025 budget. So I think we entered into, we as the council entered into the contract with our auditors, right? So I want to request a meeting with them. And I'm thinking, like, somebody should have seen this coming. And if I remember that contract, they are supposed to give us periodically, like, reports.
Council, Council President?
Forecast.
But they, they audit the prior year. So their audit was of 2024. We weren't enrolled in this plan in 2024. We weren't self-insured. We were still a part of the HIF in 2024.
Okay. So could they still? I think I still...
You wanted them to flag this as this plan is volatile. This plan may lead to you having to do an emergency. This plan may
Right.
not go the way you think it.
Right. Because I'm thinking, like, we have a contract with them and, and thank you for letting me know it was 2024, which I should have known because I read that audit book and I read those audit trail things. It kind of like blew me away. So I still want to meet with them regarding that. But, so I guess my question is, since that contract was 2024 and we signed it in 2025, so who will we have outside of the city that will flag us or speak to us regarding things such as this? You see what I'm saying?
So, so the, so the, the answer to your question is you employ a risk manager by contract. And the risk manager is supposed to assess your claim loss run and make a, a educated actuarial guess as to what your claims are going to be from year to year. As I said before, they give you a range. We have the report, or the estimates, I should say, from the beginning of 2025 that we based our budget numbers on. So if you're looking to see who is the guardrail, it's the risk manager.
Do we have one?
Yeah.
Okay, can I meet with them?
Fair of you.
I guess I'll call them and ask through you, through the administration, if I could meet with them and just, like, shoot some questions around.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Question, but I can't. I, I think one of the things that...
Chris, and now has not really talked about is we had some heavy hitters in medical debt this year. Some heavy, heavy hitters that increased the amount we needed to pay out in claims. So that's what escalated to us going over. You know, it wasn't enough money because people got sick and there were some heavy, heavy hitters on the sick list and the things that happened. Because we all know certain type of illnesses cost a lot more than some of the other ones. And the hospital stays is like, you know, these hospitals are charging extra money. I have one prescription, $2,000. So the drugs are also astronomical right now. And if you don't have a drug plan or some, that's a lot of money out of somebody's pocket. So if a lot of people are saying, well, I can't afford my medicines versus I need to buy food. So we're having a lot of people not taking medication because it's so expensive. So you got to have some type of drug plan to offset some of that. And, but we've had some heavy hitters in healthcare. People just getting sick. We see it every day. And health is showing us as a plus because if you don't have it, then... A friend of mine just went to the hospital the other week. And the bill he showed me, because he didn't have health insurance, but he's going to pay it. I mean, I think he was there maybe one day, like 2,300 bucks. You know, just think if he had stayed a whole month, he'd have been spending over $10,000 out of his pocket. So I'm just saying, that's one of the things that caused the deficit in the... That's one of the things that caused the deficit in our health benefits.
Well, just to, to underscore, I go back, probably not in English, but what I was saying, we had a bunch of heavy hitters. I called them catastrophic losses. They totaled right around three point five million dollars. And that does not include one claimant that's well over a million dollars. Because that gets picked up by your stopgap insurance. Over a certain amount. So, yes, we had a lot of heavy hitters. And we haven't had that in previous years to that, that extent.
Anyone else? Councilman Coley?
Yes, kinda all suffixed and it tore. It is what it is.
Councilman Ross? Councilwoman Gilbert?
That's, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Eastern?
I'm good.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson? Alright.
Roll call. Councilwoman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eastern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross? Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Yes.
That's seven yeas for four fifty six dash twenty twenty five. This was adopted. For the record, Councilwoman Gilbert arrived at five oh nine P M. Councilwoman Summers Johnson arrived at five fourteen P M. Resolution. Four fifty seven dash twenty twenty five, a resolution of the City of Orange Township and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizing an emergency appropriation in an amount of seven million dollars to pay health insurance costs pursuant to N J S A forty A four dash forty six and N J S A forty A colon four dash forty eight and authorizing the issuance of emergency no- notes pursuant to N J S A forty A colon four dash fifty one. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, Coley.
Motion by Councilman Montague the third, second by Councilman Coley. On the motion? Roll call. Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eastern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Yes.
That's seven yeas. Motion is adopted. Resolution four fifty eight dash twenty twenty five, resolution of the City of Orange Township and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, making application to the local finance board pursuant to N J S A forty A colon two dash fifty one, N J S A forty A colon four dash forty eight and N J S A forty A colon four dash forty nine. Is there a motion?
Motion, Coley.
Second, Eastern.
Motion by Councilman Coley, second by Councilwoman Eastern. On the motion? Roll call. Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eastern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross? Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Yes.
That's seven yeas. Motion is adopted. Resolution four fifty nine dash twenty twenty five, a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Elder Joseph David Reed. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Eastern, second by Councilwoman Wooton. Is, on the motion? Roll call. Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eastern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Yes.
That's seven yeas. Motion is adopted. We, can I have a motion to walk on? Ordinance sixty seven dash twenty twenty five. Let me read the, the title first. A ref- refunding bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed seven million dollars aggregated principal amount of refunding bonds and or refunding notes by the City of Orange Township and this, in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, for the purpose of funding an emergency appropriation to fund health benefit costs. Can I have a motion to walk this on?
Motion to walk on.
Second, Hilbert.
Motion by Councilwoman Eastern, second by Councilwoman Gilbert. All those in favor vote by saying aye. Any opposed? Sixty seven dash twenty twenty five is now walked on. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilman Montague, second by Councilwoman Eastern. On the motion? Roll call. Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eastern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross? Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Yes.
That's seven yeas. Motion is adopted. Is there anything else for the record?
Real quick. Who are we giving? Who's, who's, who's the contact for this? The donations for the um, October thirty first, October thirtieth Halloween. There's no contact name on here.
They changed the flyer. Um, it should be updated today.
We changed the date too?
I just saw some emails going back at work. I don't know specifics of what they changed.
Do you think the date is still the same?
Oh, it's on, it's on Friday, yes.
It's on Friday?
Yeah.
On thirty first instead of the thirtieth?
Yes.
Oh, okay. But I still know, need to know who's collecting the, the um, candy and stuff.
I would assume it's Dean and Matt and then agree.
Okay, okay, alright. So I do, you answer about new business. I, I do have a um, new business that I would like the business administrator to speak to us about. It's regarding police overtime. Because when he went, mentioned this meeting, he also mentioned that he needed to speak to us about police overtime. So now is a good a time as any, I think. We might as well do it.
So we didn't bring the police overtime to tonight's meeting because we don't have a firm number. We have a few more payrolls. I know that the most recent payroll that's going in Friday, the overtime number is gonna be around ninety thousand dollars just for that payroll. That included ten thousand dollars for the pink out. And so, basically, you're over your budgetary line item for overtime for police and fire. There may however be some other revenues or shouldn't say revenues, other appropriations, other line items that may be able to be transferred to offset the overage. So we won't know that.
We'll have a better idea the second week of February, second meeting of February.
Yeah, the second meeting in November. Uh, just to expand on what Chris was saying. So the reason why, so we have a overage in police overtime. We budgeted seven hundred thousand. It's at one point three million. It's gonna go up to over one point four million with this Friday's payroll. I haven't seen the numbers, but based off what Chris said, ninety thousand. But we had policemen that voluntarily left, over about twenty policemen that voluntarily left. So there is money in the salary and wage line, one O one, to cover the overtime over expenditure at this point, which is account one O five. So that's why we don't, are not declaring an emergency for police and fire overtime at this time. There's also the grants that we received from the state, nine hundred thousand for police salary wages and one million dollars for fire salary wages. That's gonna be factored in. But there will be an emergency ordinance for, excuse me, a special emergency ordinance for payouts. We've been doing that ordinance on an annual basis. Uh, I estimate that number to be close to nine hundred thousand, around eight hundred fifty, nine hundred thousand for all of the payouts. There are some additional payouts that are still coming forth. As you all know, I believe the police chief is retiring. There are a couple more people retiring in police. Once we have all of those figures, if we all agree that we're gonna have a special emergency ordinance for the payouts, then I calculate that there is no need for a regular emergency authorization for overtime. Because once we back out the payouts with the grant money and the additional funds from the voluntary police that have left, there'll be sufficient funds to close the year with the special emergency ordinance.
Council President? Okay, can um, someone explain to me, uh, what is the policy for overtime? I know um, my husband's in another municipality, but I see he has slips carbon, like carbon copy slips that says his overtime was approved and, you know, all of that's on there. Do we keep our overtime like that as well?
Yes.
So, no one is
Every overtime shift generates a slip.
Okay.
Slip goes to payroll after it's signed by the tour captain and it goes upstairs to the chief's office. And it's then submitted to payroll.
Okay, so then if that's the case, then explain to me how we are spending more money than we have. Like, why are we not? I get the pink out. That's great, but I mean, that's not something that we should be ten thousand in a hole. I mean, the whole point of the walk was for cancer research, but being ten thousand dollars in a hole because we had officers out there with, with the financial situations that we're dealing with. I'm just trying to figure out how are we approving overtime if there's no more money left cuz we're way over what we appropriated?
So, you have a sort of catch twenty-two when it comes to police and fire, and that is that I can't, as the business administrator, go into the police chief and tell him no more overtime. Because that gets into daily operations of the police department and civilians are not allowed to do that. However, I can direct him to cut any overtime that's non-emergent. Now, what constitutes an emergency is a pretty broad spectrum of activities within the police function. So for example, if you have six people on a tour and one of those people calls out sick, somebody gets called in for overtime. If two of them call out sick, two people get called in for overtime. When you factor in sick calls, vacation, family medical leave, military leave, uh, personal days, wee days, seniority days, all of which are considered paid time off. We often have a shortage in every tour.
So then it, I don't understand how it would ever get better if we appropriated seven hundred thousand and we're already at a million. I mean, how? And you can't tell the chief because you're a civilian. And I guess the chief is not really monitoring. I mean, I mean, if he says he needs overtime, I guess he's approving it, but I'm just trying to I, I don't know. I'm thinking about my own bank account and I'm thinking about if I would be able to go buy a new car knowing that like I don't have the money. I, I just don't, I don't know how we, how we, how do we explain that to residents because we're civilians and we can't go in there, but they're looking at us to um, balance the budget. So I, I'm just, if it's out of our hands, I don't understand how we would ever get a hold of it.
I mean, to a large extent, we're under budgeting for overtime. We're making cuts in the overtime line in order to comply with our cap restrictions. So if you realistically look at the budget overtime line, you probably should be around a million to a million one.
So when we do the budget the next time, we shouldn't under. We should, we should, we should go higher and then if we don't spend it, because I mean, to be that off, like when we, I thought we like look at like the past two years or something like that and like kinda guesstimate what range we're in. So now we know, is it, is it because we don't have enough officers or is it because you said the officers left like? Or is it just the handle?
Your overtime numbers this year are not significantly different than your overtime numbers from last year.
Okay.
Even with the departures.
Do you remember about how much we went over last year? Cuz it was about the same, right?
I think so too.
Last year, total spent for overtime in police, one point eight million.
And we're looking at one point what now?
We're, we'll be at one point four after the next payroll.
And last year was budgeted was seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred thousand.
So we went over a one point?
Went over about one million.
One point one.
So Councilwoman Summers Johnson, to be transparent during the budget process, I said something just to the effect of that, you know, we have to be very transparent about our budget, even though it may start in the green, but it's not really in the green. We really adopted a budget in the red for that line item because there wasn't sufficient funds budgeted for overtime. So to speak to that fact, there were, we didn't budget enough. We had, you know, seven hundred thousand there for the reasons that we did, but it wasn't sufficient. At that point, we were already close to that number in August when we adopted the budget.
Well, I remember a conversation that we had as certain council members we had and we knew that we weren't gonna hit the seven hundred thousand. And we knew that we were gonna be probably at a million or a million five. But I guess the majority ruled and we just did the seven hundred thousand. Cuz I know we had conversations about that. I know we did. Can I just ask one more question? Because is there a what, there's no, like, I know you said some stuff we get back with grants, like there's no, like, grants that cover those type of situations cuz you said some. Am I making that up? Cuz I, I make up stuff sometimes.
Niall said that there's some offset from the state grant.
Okay. All I heard was grant and I was
We'll see what that is.
Okay.
There are some grants that cover overtime. They're very small. They're Department of Justice grants. We apply for them on a regular basis.
Okay.
And they only offset overtime in certain categories of work.
So like Click It In Ticket is one grant that we receive for overtime. That's the one that comes to the top of my mind.
Council President?
Councilman Ross?
In that pink out where you said, um, Chris, um, we paid out ten grand. Did we consider shared services? Because that was in collaboration with um, the East Orange um, people too. So why did we pay in ten? Did they contribute to this?
My understanding is that there were East Orange officers out there as well.
It was.
It was half and half. It was half and half. So they probably got ten thousand also.
So is there a way we can confirm that?
Sure.
I think one of my biggest concerns is, I know we've cut overtime for the people who aren't police officers and who aren't fire people. And I know they struggle not to do overtime. Um, and we've cut it, so it's kinda not fair to people who aren't But who, you see what I'm saying? Like?
I understand that completely. The, the reality is, is that we cut overtime where we can. And we've even made, you know, significant efforts, believe it or not, in monitoring and reducing some of the overtime in police. And notwithstanding that with departure personnel and all the things that I mentioned before. And then on top of that, you have uncontrollable events. So, when you have a shooting or you have a homicide or you have a search warrant execution, that, that brings in a whole group of people on overtime. And we have incidents like that, not the homicide obviously, but we have incidents like that regularly. We execute a lot of search warrants. We do a lot of burglary details. You probably saw the emails back and forth about the package thief. Um, we had to do a detail for that. That was all done on overtime.
So, my, my thought is, there's still a lot of money on the table because in other areas, I don't think we're doing enough finding um, with code enforcement. Like, there's so much money out there. That's one of the biggest complaints that we get, like, people not getting tickets for not doing the, you know what I mean? Like, I just think we need to, like, all hands on deck, all of the rules and le- and legislation that we've put in place, like, money has got, I remember Main Street used to bring in like, and I, I could be off. It was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when all of those machines were like working. And now, like, when we get the reports, it's like nine thousand here, ten thousand there, like, that is something where we know Main Street stays packed cuz I can never find parking on Main Street. But I'm just But I'm just saying, like, we we really are gonna have to put our heads together on bringing in more, more in. Because I feel like we're spending more than we have and with no um. With no idea of how we're going to bring in more. Because I know they have to have the overtime. I'm not, I don't want to restrict them of that. But at the same time, when you talk about taxes going up, now that comes back. It hits all of us as council people and as taxpayers as well. And I don't know.
So we have identified certain areas. Where there's revenue that we can collect. Some of it, we've never collected before. Through historical operations. We've identified a particular area in rental housing registration. Where we were not getting the fees because people just weren't coming forward. It's sort of an honor system. And so we figured out a way to turn that into a not honor system. And that should bring in a fair amount of revenue.
Council President. What are the other things? Uh I know Mr. Me and I had talked about. When we, the code enforcement team is quite upset. That's some money that we could make profit on. But a lot of times when they write the tickets, they go to court, they're downgraded. They might think they're gonna get five hundred dollars, the judge downgraded to twenty-five dollars. So they're unhappy at the way that works because that's revenue that we could use towards um our budget. But as far as like, I did the training on Saturday and that was one of the reasons I did the training. Because I wanted to ask that question about police overtime to see how other towns and everybody's struggling with the same thing. They can't control police overtime because they feel that it's a necessity. And they're trying to put some things in place to offset some of that, but nobody has any answers. Also, the the all of the meters on Main Street don't work. I was at one Sunday that didn't work. I thought we put new heads on all of them.
We did and we put.
This had an old head on it, one of the.
Where was it?
Right there by um. What was the, the hardware store?
Ebbsing?
Yeah, it's got an old head.
Everything that's on Main Street is a new head. Every single.
Look at that one. I guarantee you it's an old head.
You know what she's talking about? They got knocked down. And they put, they put the old one back.
So, it's a coin operated?
It won't take quarters though because you can't get anything in there.
What about what I asked all the time?
Parking on Glenwood.
But you know.
Well, they wrote you an email. I said Chris Mobley wrote you an email.
Oh, I must have missed it. Can you let me know what it said?
So, um there was only so much money in the parking meter line item. And it has to be addressed in the twenty twenty-six budget or after funds can be transferred in November.
But also, let me finish with that. The other, the other issue is, years ago when I moved to Orange. The employees would not allow, if you worked in Main Street, you couldn't park on Main Street because that left space for them. So now, everybody, the employees are parking up there. They sit there all day long. So there's no turnover. You used to have somebody come around, you know, put the yellow chalk on the tires. If you were there certainly at the time, you get a ticket. All of that went out the window. So we lo- we're losing money on that aspect also.
Hopefully, when that utility starts up, you know, they will be on Main Street twenty-four seven. And in those lots doing what you just said and giving out tickets. Right now, nobody's out there or rarely somebody.
Have stepped theirs up. I mean, they put, they put meters in places. I couldn't believe my eyes and especially further down on Main Street by the trophy shop, which I've gone to all my life. You better put your, they are waiting and I'm and and I, I mean, seriously, they are like aggressive, Irvington especially. Um they are not playing about you being there, not paying South Orange, forget about it. Like, don't even think, don't even. You know, that thing alerts you that you got like five minutes, you better get there. And that's, that's the way Orange needs to be. Because, you know, if you've ever had any contracting done in your house, if they don't know you're a council person, they say the craziest things. I know they s- to to me, they'll say, listen, you know, you don't need uh permit, you know, in Orange. They're like, what? They say it a lot because I I believe this is, this is like what people think, like you can get away with it. So we need to really make sure that we are. Going after these money because if not, we, it's up, it has to be, because there has to be money on the table. We cannot. And I was just bragging about how we weren't like the other towns that haven't passed their budget and. School board's twenty million in the hole. Like, I I just want to make sure we just keep keeping our head. Up and not just relying on tax, taxes.
Yes, Councilman Colley. Just changing gears a little bit, how many officers do we currently have?
One sixteen.
One, a hundred sixteen.
By the end of the year. I think you have like one twenty.
Okay, I I mentioned this to you before. This happened a couple of times, you know, um, you know, during my uh law enforcement career here in Orange. When we ran into the budgetary issues of with the police and other. The majority of people that was in assignments, they got pulled back and everyone was assigned to patrol. So all those um uh uh slots in patrol that is, you know, that was, you know, that was um. You know, because someone was out, whatever, it was full, it was filled. Now, now you got body, so everybody worked out of patrol. Because the the patrol is the backbone of your department. That's why I argue that the majority of your overtime flows from. If you pull, you know, the majority of your folks back out of assignments, you put them back into those those slots. Because now, if you look at the overtime, I'm I'm gonna, you you look at it um a patrol s- spot. You know, i- it's not being filled um by an over, i- it's an overtime slot. When you could pull a body from an assignment to fill that spot until you can stop the bleeding.
When you raised it in my office with the two other council people, shortly thereafter, I wrote an email to the chief and the director. I gave them names of people that I want to transfer back into patrol. It was a suggestion because I obviously can't order it.
Trust me, I I get that, I get that, you know, and 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 this is the problem that we have. Uh we 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 we, we 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 just gonna continue to be, you know, you know, chasing that tails. Because um. Because we can't get um people, you know, plugged into um spots to uh stop the bleeding. I get it. I get it.
Council pre- Council Vice President. I want to go back to the code enforcement um concern, um because that's just like with the parking meters and what's going on in the community. Through you to the VA, do you know off the top of your head how much a fine for working? On a Sunday or the weekend would be?
I think it's five hundred dollars. Working on a Sunday, if you're working on a Saturday, you're allowed.
Okay, so people are constantly complaining about construction work happening on Sundays. And inspectors are called out, but how do we as council even know if that person was issued a fine or a violation?
So, the only way you would know is if you made the complaint and you provided me with a copy of the address. And then I would check with code enforcement to see what the disposition of that complaint was.
Okay, a follow-up question. Um you said that sometimes, well, not, I'm sorry, you didn't say it. I think the councilwoman said it. Sometimes the code um uh enforcers or the inspectors, they get discouraged because when you go to court, the fines are lowered, right? So similar to what happened with that whole volleyball courts incident. Do we have an increase in the fines after a certain number of violations?
Yes, we do.
So ha- after like, after the second one, after the third one?
Yeah, the first one and then if you get a second one, the fee goes higher. If you get a third one, the fee goes higher.
So, can we look into? Changing the schedule for that? Because I I feel that there's, there's nothing else that's going to give that kick. For people to fall in line and adhere to our our laws here, our regulations. You know, I know there's compliance, you know, people talking about they don't need permits. You know, it's like a free-for-all in Orange. That's disrespectful. It's disrespectful to homeowners, the taxpayers, and the work we all came here to do. So, how else can we crack down if if it's not by hitting them through their pockets? It's, I mean, can, when a- after, how many violations can we take back their permits? And say they can't operate until they do this, 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 this?
Well, that's, that, that's just one aspect, right, which is the construction that's taking place on Sundays. In many instances, they have no permits at all. The crews come in on Saturday after five o'clock in their vans. They work overnight and then they leave first thing Monday morning. We had a um inspector working weekends. But because they were working weekends, they were getting overtime. We have had discussions with that inspector about splitting his shift. Um because you can do that on a negotiated basis. We haven't had success in negotiating that um with that inspector or the others. So. The. Only way to address the construction on Sundays is to call it in and then I have to call out an emergency inspection. But that's just one component. I think what, what? The other component that the councilwoman, both councilwoman Easton and Councilwoman Summers Johnson were referring to is just basic code enforcement. Property code violations, zoning code violations, you know, trucks parking on front lawns. And all of those things. Need to be addressed and I have to speak to code enforcement about, about addressing it. And I'll also speak to the prosecutor about how he's pleading out some of those cases. Because the prosecutor works for the city attorney's office.
I I have a question. Who's in charge here? You you you're negotiating, you have to negotiate with the code enforcement officers? I I don't get it. Who's in charge here?
So they're covered by a collective bargaining agreement and that collective bargaining agreement sets their hours. It's a collective bargaining agreement that's in place, has been in place for decades. The hours set for the, for the code inspectors is eight thirty to four thirty. There's another provision in the contract that allows them to be on standby, but only for heat calls and only during certain times of the year. So, in order for me, I can hire, under the new contract that we negotiated. I could hire a new inspector on a flex schedule, but I haven't had the luxury of hiring a new inspector. So I tried to get one of the old inspectors to go on a flex schedule. And I haven't been able to do that. And they have a collective bargaining right to say no.
Yeah, I I would love to see that going forward, once we figure out this whole budget issue, because I know we have to hire back. The people we had previously before we start entertaining, bringing on new people. But um like you said, those work fans, they come in, they're eating up the parking from the current residents. You know, just previously, like two weeks ago, I showed you how they're putting up illegal do not park signs. That haven't been authorized by the police department or this body or the city hall. And so people are taking matters into their own hands when they're coming into Orange. And the residents don't know the difference. That's even scarier. They don't even know when their rights have been taken from them. So, um. I I like to see an aggressive educational plan around this. I think I mentioned this a while ago with you and Director Best. On can we work with her and her department on. Creating some type of workshop to discuss with the community what it looks like when somebody has a permit, what it looks like, a a sign. Like, the residents are sending me photos after photos after photos. Is this real? Is this normal? So it's, it's like the council, we're being the mediators and we come to you all the time, like we've never seen anything like this before. And constantly, the people are getting more clever and witty at at taking those shortcuts to get their job sites. You know, get to their job sites and get their work done. But in the same instance, they're up here putting up cones and all types of stuff. And having a whole row of vans just park overnight and stay there just so they could work anytime they want. And um like I said, it's just an inconvenience. And I want to see how we could make sure that we are including the residents to let them know that we're engaging them, but we're also working on it as well. And I don't want to throw the code enforce uh the inspectors underneath the bus, because I know they're out there. I see them all the time.
I think. With all due respect, call me old fashioned, but I think the best education program is an aggressive enforcement program. We've educated people a lot on garbage. We had meetings in every ward. We hand-delivered notices to people. We blasted it. We then had more meetings. Every time there's a community meeting, I make sure Marty talks about the garbage ordinance.
Yes, he does.
And the violations just keep coming and coming and coming. I can't keep up with them because I only have two people writing tickets. For garbage violations. So, honestly. We just ought to be enforcing things more aggressively.
I understand.
And and that will bring results.
I'm sorry, one last question. How many people are you looking to hire to collect from the meters?
Three.
Three, okay, thank you.
Possibly four.
Through you to the business administrator, we don't have anybody code enforcement on Sunday, right? Because I know the police.
No, that's what I was just talking about.
Yeah, because uh, so I guess we need to let the residents know there should be no construction on Sunday. And what normally happen, you call the police, they come out and give them a summons. For doing construction. I mean, not not even just working on a house. They can't even do that on Sundays anymore. Well, I still say we need a warrant squad.
A warrant squad?
For the people that don't pay them fines.
Council President.
We never go after them. So we kind of got thousands of dollars out there and paid fines that nobody's collecting.
Councilman Colley. Just backing up to the uh garbage collection, we pass this ordinance on how the garbage should be set out the night before. In plastic bags inside the container with a lid, but yet people still put. Uh garbage bags out. Just tell. Just tell the contractor, don't pick up the ones that's sitting out.
That doesn't help my rodent.
No, 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 no. I get it. I trust me. We may have to go through a little pain before we get to where we need to go. Just, 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 and when people start calling and complaining that my garbage wasn't picked up, just have someone go past and looked at it and if it's out. Uh not set out the way that it should, give them an ordinance, right? I mean, see, I I give them a fine right there. Start doing that. I it 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 may, you know, take a little, you know, time, you know, but um. But people just don't sit the trash out the way that they should and they're not going to because. The garbage is continued to be picked up. Stop picking it up, stop picking it up, stop picking it up, not unless it's set out the way that it should.
Or.
We'll find and pick it up because.
Yes.
We got so many animals roaming. We got there too long and we spread all over the sidewalks.
And then think, think about this, hold on, think about this, right? They decided actually leave it out there. They don't even call and say, oh, nobody picked up my garbage. And then the second incident, think about it, if they do take it back, now the next time trash day come, they got four or five bags and they only got one garbage can. So now the garbage, the garbage is going to be sitting on the ground because they don't even have enough garbage cans for all their bags.
Where did Nor get their garbage cans? Because theirs have their name on it. Theirs have the city of Norfolk on it. And so, yeah, they're, because that's, when I'm driving to school, I see they have the huge one for the residents now. Was that, do you, I mean, I'm just, was that like a grant or did they have to buy it?
I don't know, I need to check.
Because that might, I mean, I have like four of them. Because I, we got raccoons that have issues on our side of town. They like open, we have, we put bricks on top of it. They opened the garbage, like, it's just, I mean, I don't. bricks on top of it. They open the garbage, like, it's just, I mean, I don't know. Between them and the deer, I don't know what's going on, but I I just, back to the enforcement part of it, I know at one time they sent out warning notices. And then right after the warning notice, they gave everyone a certain amount of time to fix whatever it was. And if they didn't, you know, cause I know we have a problem over there near you on the other side of Fairview with the garage that's like dilapidated or whatever, seventeen years maybe, I think. Come on. Like, I know that judges, um, do downplay things, but I think not with contractors. I think I could see like an elderly resident, you know, or something like that. But like, they need to understand the goal is to take our city back. You know, that's, that's the goal is to get it so that it's livable and, you know, you're not living, I mean, we're lucky enough to have bulk days. I mean, some towns, like I know South Orange, they pay, right? They pay for bulk and and those type things. So a lot of the things that we have that businesses don't realize, it's not a luxury, but I'm just saying, other towns don't have it like we have it. I don't know.
Council Vice President. Are the businesses, um, held to the same garbage ordinance? They're not, they're not using garbage cans. They're still putting the bags on the ground.
That's my point.
So those should be tickets.
They've been, they've been ticketed.
Yeah, and on Main Street, that's bad.
I mean.
All you see is black garbage bags.
Yeah, the black garbage bags.
Those cardboard, you know, when they put them out on a windy day, they're all over the street.
So, um, and also for apartment dwellings, right? I see some of the apartments, the apartment buildings on Central Avenue with the little tiny garbage cans. I don't even know how many gallons. Don't ask me. But it's almost like the garbage can you could put in your kitchen, maybe a thirteen gallon or something with the little lids. And they just have a whole bunch of them just lined up in front of the building, right? So why can't we just enforce that they use a bigger dumpster?
We have. It's in the ordinance.
Not enforcing.
Oh, no. We're enforcing. They're not complying. We educate it, we enforce, they still don't comply. And it takes months to get them in court.
BA Hartwick, I need you to use your mad face. You know, you gotta get angry with them. You gotta get a little rough. Flex a little muscle.
I have a question. The the city truck that follows the garbage trucks, do they, do they write tickets?
That's pretty much all they do.
They do.
Is write tickets. And sometimes I have two trucks following garbage trucks to write tickets.
Do do code enforcement inspectors do write tickets?
Yes, they do. In fact, we did a blitz in every ward. Literally hundreds and hundreds of tickets.
All right, are we finished? Can we close this meeting now?
Is there another meeting after this?
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Easton, second by Councilwoman Hilbert. Is there any questions? Motion, motion is adopted. We are adjourned. Six twenty-two P M.